Pretty good?
Okay.
Welcome, everybody. We're going to begin the evening with a public hearing on ordinance O dash twenty-three dash twenty-one. In ordinance to the Town Council, Chesapeake Beach, amending Article Three zoning district subsection two ninety dash ten land use table and subsection two ninety dash eleven. Conditions and standards for conditional and special exemption uses. Is there anybody that wants to make a public comment on that particular ordinance? Please come on up. Give us your name and address, and we're happy to hear your comment.
Good evening. Thank you so much. My name is Kristin DePhilippe. I manage Horizons on the Bay eighty-five oh one Bayside Road. I just wanted to take a few minutes to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission for all of their hard work and their input on this ordinance and Chris for helping to draft the text amendment to restore the original zoning of the property. We have a few businesses that are really excited to start setting up and starting their new ventures here in the town. And of course, we as the managers and the owners of some of those commercial spaces are really looking forward to getting those people in so we can start collecting rents on spaces that have been vacant since pre-COVID or during COVID. And then I also just wanted to thank the council for taking the ordinance into consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good to see you again.
You too.
Is there anyone else who wants to comment on this public, on this ordinance? This is, on this particular ordinance, sir?
Yes. Hi, I'm Daniel DeValle. I live at thirty-six ten Chesapeake Beach Road. With that, I was at the meeting, and I know that they had a customer, like a person wanting to get their business started and stuff like that. About how long would, once that gets approved or not approved, would it be for that person to be able to open their business?
This is public comments, sir. This is not a Q and A. Yeah. Thank you. Anybody else that has any, any public comment on this ordinance? Very none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing? On favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. I believe we probably have about a minute or two before we... Good. Okay. Welcome, everybody, to the September twenty-first Town Council meeting. At the record read that the entire council was present. At this time, we're gonna do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as eternal.
Your motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Oh, I have a comment.
Sir, please have a seat. Please have a seat, sir. Thank you. We, I have a, I have a mo, I have a motion to approve approval of the agenda. I did hear a second, I believe. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the ayes have it. Okay. At this time, I will ask you, sir, any public comment on any item on the agenda?
I'm not really sure on how to order. Sorry about that. So I came to the...
If you don't mind, I'm going to have you state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Daniel DeValle, thirty-six ten Chesapeake Beach Road, Chesapeake. I was at the... I'd like to add this to the agenda for tonight. I was at the September twelfth, and I'd like just to read this, to be added and included within tonight.
Sir?
With regard to what you're reading, I've already given that to the town administrator to be a part of tonight's record.
Okay.
Be in the record.
Okay. I have some copies here if other people want copies and I have copies for the public.
Right there on the table, we'll gladly get them when the meeting's over.
Okay.
And your comments will be in the record.
All right, thank you.
You can put around that seat over there. Or your seat, wherever you go.
You're welcome. I'll come up and get them.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Okay. Approval of the minutes of the July twentieth public hearings.
Approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Approval of the minutes of the July twentieth Town Council meeting.
No moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Approval of the minutes of the September twelfth informational work session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Approval of the minutes of the September twelfth closed session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. At this time, we have the One Maryland, One Book presentation. You know, a lot of you, young lady.
I know.
It's great. It's been great. I gave up my Kindle.
Well, thank you for having me here today. I'm Melissa Gray. I'm the branch manager at Calvert Library Twin Beaches Branch, and I'm here to present the One Maryland, One Book. When we read a great book, we can't wait to share the experience and talk about it with others. That's one of the joys of reading. In that spirit, Maryland Humanities created One Maryland, One Book to bring together diverse people in communities across the state through the shared experience, experience of reading the same book. Since two thousand and eight, Maryland Humanities has gathered suggestions from the public, educators, librarians, schools, book clubs, and other partners based on an annual theme. This year's theme is connection. So I'm excited to announce the two thousand and twenty-three One Maryland, One Book selection is There There by Tommy Orange. There There wonderfully captures this year's theme of connection. Released in two thousand and eighteen, There There tells the interconnected stories of a cast of twelve native characters from across generational lines as they converge toward the big Oakland powwow. Some contend with sobriety, others mental health, while others desire to preserve their culture through dance and history. A few, meanwhile, plan to rob the powwows cash prize. Through multiple facets, Tommy Orange gives readers a riveting modern portrait of the urban Indian experience. There There was one of New York Times Book Review's ten best books of the year. And this fall, we have programming around There There across the state. At the Twin Beaches Branch, our discussion is going to be Tuesday, October tenth at six thirty. So please stop by and grab a copy. I'll leave this one for you guys to share. And thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I add a quick comment to this? So number one, I'm halfway through the book, and it's riveting. So it's really entertaining. Number two, tell me if I have this wrong, Melissa, but there is another, because I can't make the one at Twin Beaches. There is another discussion at Mama Lucia's in Dunkirk. Date on that?
I have my phone on airplane mode, so I don't know.
If anyone's interested and can't make that October date, there is, I think it's a week later, and it's at Mama Lucia's in Dunkirk. So there's other opportunities to discuss the book if you can't make that October.
We do. We have four across the county, so thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Charlie. Councilman Think. Okay. Town Administrator's report. We've read Holly's report. If we have any questions, I'll begin with Councilwoman Bodine, working my way around the horn.
Hi.
If you don't mind, just one second. I always ask Holly, does she have anything she wants to add in advance?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one update related to the pocket parks for the Town Council and the public. So our three pocket parks are well underway. All material has been ordered, and we do expect that they will be completed within the next month. So that's the B Street Pocket Park. We also have the gateway to Callum's Field and our pocket park on the bayfront also. All materials are on site and close to you.
Very well. Dr. Bodine.
Thanks, Holly. Glad to hear you're feeling better. On page one, my first question is regarding the water tower. And it says the town's review needs for water tower maintenance through an RFP. So just a few questions here. Maybe you could just expand on that. So is this a new maintenance schedule that we hope to do from here on out? Because I believe most of the time, Public Works has taken care of this previously. Will it be a, maybe perhaps next year, like a new line item within the budget, if we know? So what's going on? Can you expand upon this just a little?
Sure. Yes. And Jay can fill in further details as well. He's worked extensively on this. But basically, we are preparing to bring some proposals to Town Council for tower maintenance. So all of our water towers in town to be maintained by a third party. So that would cover all cleaning, any painting that be required, as well as third-party inspections related to our cell towers on top of our water tower facilities. And so we are looking at either potentially considering a piggyback contract with another municipality or submitting out an RFP for sealed proposals. So we do expect to have something back to Town Council next month. And Jay, have I missed any details you want to add?
I think you captured it pretty good. And so one of the things was brought to our attention from the annual inspections is some radio equipment. There's three leases on Old Bayside Tower within themselves. They're okay, but there's some different things we need to look at. And part of this maintenance contract would, would look into some of those things. Also, MDE has changed some rulings. We're actually got to do inspections with inside the bowl, if you were, where the water is every three years. We used to do that visually every year. So there's a couple new laws and a couple new things. There's, for example, just real quick, the county does this, North Beach does this. There's a lot of areas around, so we're looking into that. It also incorporates a ten-year lookout, so we don't come here every so often saying we need three hundred fifty thousand to paint a tower. It's kind of all budgeted in, but there'll be more to come.
Okay, I think, thank you. I think that explains what precipitated this, because I'm wondering why all of a sudden something that was normally done in-house is now being looked at to be done out of house. And I think your explanations really made me understand it, because I didn't, you know, at first. And thank you. I have more. Because this goes all the way through all the town administrator's report. So I had a question on page three. It's the Richfield Station water saddle replacement. So I know that this has been ongoing. It was part of the ARPA funds. And so if I read this correctly, the saddle replacements are done?
That's correct.
And if so, this should be congratulated. I mean, so I, more needs to be said about this. This was a project that was ongoing. You come to any Town Council meetings when Jay discussed this, he would bring up the infrastructure, the equipment, set it out here, and tried to describe to people that have no clue, like me, what needed to happen. And so everything from electromagnetic things to all the problems that occurred, and this is not a minor thing. It should be commended.
Thank you. And Jay is working on bringing back a recap to Town Council and the public to talk about that project and the cost savings from, from using those funds to complete that project. So we do have that coming forward.
And then moving on, because it seems like we're consolidating a lot of the reports into one now, so I'm sorry to take so much time. I apologize.
We'll be sorry.
I'm moving on to the page four, and this one is the treatment plant. And once again, I think congratulations are in order if I read this correctly, but sometimes what Josh writes can go right over my head unless I talk to Larry. This is in the third WRTP. It's the very last sentence, it says filter media look to be in better condition, and this can be likely attributed to the insulation of the covers and the clarifiers. So once again, we were talking about clarifiers and that hope for a very long time. So if I read this correctly, let me know if my interpretation is mistaken. Once again, this is a success, and it needs to be highlighted. Am I correct?
Correct. That's a recent project that Town Council awarded to mitigate the filters and increase the longevity of them. Correct.
And filters are, if I'm not mistaken, one of the more expensive items in the, in the treatment plant, or they can be. And so congratulations on getting that done. I think that's a big deal personally. Moving on to, I actually read your report, sorry. Moving on to page five. You replaced a, you had to replace something with a spare that you had on hand. If I read it correctly, a little bit lower, you said that you sent out that, that pump to be repaired. So you do not need another backup, right? You're getting the initial one repaired, brought back. This is, I'm not very good at this, so forgive me. It's in this, like, paragraph right here, where it says replace with the one on hand. So that's your backup, which we always talk about backups.
Correct.
You go down to the last sentence in this, and it says August twenty-ninth for repair. So you don't need another pump as a backup, because you're getting the old one repaired. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Got it. Okay. That was my simple question. I just didn't explain it well. Um. Oh, big one. This is on page seven. It says M D provided notification to the plan of its qualification for Bay Restoration Fund, and it was a grant of sixty-nine thousand dollars. Congratulations. What is this money going to be used for?
It can be utilized for just operational costs. It's in the plan if needed. Right now, we don't have anything earmarked for it at this moment.
I guess, I guess my one thought or my one comment on this, then, if it's not geared towards a specific thing that it needs to be spent on, my only cautionary thing would be that perhaps not use it for operating costs if you can. More of a one-time expense, you're buying a backup pump or something like that, because it may not come along again. You know, those one times infusions of things. This is a really long report. And I think you're still on page nine. Well, another thing that we recently had discussions on in Town Council and put funds towards were where the, where you had to fix the top of the, where it wasn't safe, and you had to, so that's done now, right?
That is done, yes.
That's another one to be congratulated on. You guys are just rocking it. You just, must be like the end of the fiscal year, you want to get everything done. I don't know. But I just noticed that one. Because we talk about these things, and it's nice to be recognized when they're accomplished, instead of just presenting problems all the time, or whatever. You know, it's nice. I'm still looking to make sure I didn't have any other comments. Just let me go through real quick, if I may, please. We're going to be talking about the water park later, so I'll leave that be. Yes, Larry, you did a great job on Taste of the Beaches. That was really fun. In my own personal experience, I thought it was really nice, the way it was set up, as opposed to being in the parking lot. If that could be a consideration again for next year, that'd be great. I think it was really well done, really comfortable there. Just making sure I didn't miss anything, sorry. I put little check marks on report. I'm on page seventeen. That's all. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Councilman Think.
One overarching question, and I probably should know this, so I apologize. Is it the plan, then, for all of these reports to be wrapped into a single report?
Correct.
You're comfortable with that doesn't create a bottleneck for you?
It does not, no.
It might make sense, even in that scenario, to break the round of questions by sub-report, if that's what Tom, just, I don't know, just the thought, it's something to talk about. Okay, very brief couple of comments. Councilwoman Bodine hit a couple of mine. I want to ask for clarification on safe routes to school, and I want to make sure that I have this right. Safe route to school is funded one hundred percent by us. Is that correct? We have allocated the funds for that project.
So we, we have our MOU with the state is a reimbursement model, so we will have to pay a hundred percent of the cost upfront, which we do have funded in our capital improvement line item for this fiscal year. We don't believe we will spend it in this fiscal year, so it would need to carry over. And then we would be reimbursed eighty percent from the state.
We will be reimbursed eighty percent, but we will pay the hundred percent, and we have allocated those funds. There is no suggestion that the state is looking or slow-rolling anything because they feel we have not funded that project.
That's correct.
That's kind of what I wanted to clarify. So I'll move on on that. Great news about the pocket parks, because I had a question there, but you answered it. On the Richfield Station saddle replacement, Jay, that project is done. Congratulations. Have you identified, or is it still a project to identify the source of the electricity that caused the problem in the first place?
So I actually have, I went to a convention, TRICOM it's called, and met someone there that saw Councilman Dorsky there. That's actually coming out, has a different theory, and I've tested it twice, and I believe it's, it's accurate, it's really quick. It's, it's, the lines are in two different soils, one being alkaline, one being acidic, and it's creating like a battery with the copper line. So it's not as much as BG&E, although BG&E will hold that DC current more prevalent. There's a lot to it, but I have learned a lot. So what we're doing when our first meeting is exactly what he would have done, as far as anodes and what we're doing and how we're moving it on. But just to be clear, when we say that that project is done, the ARPA money we allocated to it, there, we captured our biggest liability, and a lot of Richfield Station is done, but there are still some issues out there that we can take as they come on. But I just don't, I don't want you to think that everything in town is fixed. For what we did for the money, I think we saved the town a lot of money, and we took care of a lot of the big issues. And we learned a lot, and we found a lot of other things. I'll have a more comprehensive report next month. Some missing blowoffs, a lot of things in Richfield Station were found that we didn't think ever existed. And so it was good.
Good, but that's, I was kind of curious about that electricity, because otherwise we'll be, I mean, none of us may be here to do it, but we'll be doing it again at some point, so be anxious to learn about that as it goes.
Sure.
That's really all I had. These pictures of the dogs are darn cute. That's just crazy. I'm going to probably attend that next year. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a number of questions here. On the Public Works Tower Maintenance, just it raised a question in my mind, whatever happened to our plan to repaint one of those towers? We were going to do some logo stuff up there?
So we did repaint the tower. That's completed. We just had the logo still outstanding. We held that money back from the contractor, and Jay has been looking at other entities that would potentially place a logo. Jay, did you want to give any update on that?
Sure. So both of these potential maintenance bidders are able to do that and pull from a pool of people that do it. So they're going to give us a quote to do it separately, or try to incorporate into maintaining different options. But yes, we are on it.
So we do plan to go ahead with, thank you.
Yes.
Under the safe walkway around, along two sixty-one, the Choroski Memorial Walkway, will there be any chance for the council to review the feasibility study that was submitted to SHA?
Absolutely. I can get you that.
I enjoy that. And then just for the record, I think it's important to note that when SHA recently did their repaving and restriping, they moved the pavement stripe for what is the eastern side of two sixty-one adjacent to the marsh area, much closer to the marsh. So there is hardly any area left along that marsh for people to walk. So I think that's why this walkway has gotten even more important. Thank you. I know from my past professional background, I should know this, but under the sidewalks, safety at existing intersections, we talk about continental style. What is that?
Be Councilman Hart. You remember that?
It's just straight blocks going across, so they're not at an angle, and there is no striping. So it's not like there's a stripe and then horizontals. It's straight horizontals all the way across.
Okay. Thank you. Under the Sustainable Maryland designation, I look forward to updates on this feedback from the submission. Under the water reclamation plant, Josh, just another excellent report. I so enjoy reading this stuff. It takes me back to my old days, so. I would have given you a raise if you worked for me on this report. Page six, we're talking... Raise from what? Page six, talking about how the staff is working to look for ways to reduce utility costs at the plant. I know we discussed this once a long time ago. I'll just throw it out again. Solar panels. Take a look at it. And then further down that page on the E N R Project Engineering Firm, they were unable to provide an actual set of ASBILs. Did they offer any explanation as to, I mean, that's unbelievable to me.
I had a bit of a discussion with them on that, and it wasn't the most amicable, to be honest. They, their justification was, well, the contractor was keeping the records, and this is all we have, and pictures were taken, so you could go from that.
Okay. Moving on. Wait, don't, don't sit down yet. Page seven, under the discussion of the Bay Restoration Fund O N M Grant, talk about how the plant qualified for additional funding in the result of outperformance, meaning we did better than required of the three milligrams per liter for total nitrogen. Good job. That helps protect the bay, helps protect our fish and wildlife out there. Very important. Page eleven, still on that report. Verbal contact was made with M D and O eight thirty-five on July twenty-one, reporting the bypass root report was sent to M D on July twenty-fifth. Have we heard back from them?
I have not heard back from them since that, no.
Okay. So we don't know if there's any follow-up actions from them as a result of that?
No, not at this point.
Just, I think one last question for you is, any update on the planned upgrade to the headworks? I know in Town Engineers Report, you talk about, it says the design has begun. Any idea of a rough schedule for it?
Yeah, they had three months to complete the Phase One study and analysis. It'll be sometime in October.
Okay. Thank you. Two more things. One, on the item page fourteen, Coastal Residency Grant, I'm going to offer some further comments during the Climate Change Advisory Group report. And then just on the Taste of the Beaches, I wanted to just add my sincere thanks to everyone, and I will comment further during my Economic Development Committee report. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Councilman.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions about a couple...
I have a couple of questions about a couple of the projects. The the safe routes to school, which we know is the very important connector between Chesapeake Village over the beach, more or less. And I want to tag on a little bit with the clarification that Councilman Fink made. We're talking about the design phase here still. When do we? When do we see the RFP going out for design?
When the state approves it. We have several other items that we're working on getting back to the state for their amendments to the RFP. So we hope to be able to wrap that up, Wayne, within the next week. And get that over to the state. We would expect probably at least four weeks for them to review it from there.
Four weeks is, that's easy peasy. How long have they added? How long is it?
We've been talking about the RFP a year.
Okay.
And just to help, you know, whenever you change an administration after eight years with all new people, unfortunately, that's a problem with government. So with the transition of all new people, I think we took a step back, if you will, progress, but that's what that's normal. I mean, it happened eight years ago when Hogan took over for O'Malley. So it's just
It's nice to hear that, as if we're still on track. Track, I'm not sure where the track ends, but okay. So we're fully funded with the design, and I was part of that conversation. Somebody was questioning about that. But as far as construction is concerned, we're going to wait till we get, I guess we get our design plans. And what is the process? We're going to put them out for bid, receive the bids, and then budget for construction?
We would have to finish the 100% design and construction drawings first.
Right, of course.
And then we would have to apply to the state again for the next phase.
Okay.
And then go through this process again for construction.
Right, so the funding is, we're just still talking about design phase, and hopefully we're on the cusp of being able to. The water tower maintenance is just a question. Somebody asked me to ask the, any maintenance, any concerns with the water tower in Chesapeake Village, any in any capacity at all?
Well, for one, it needs washing, but the other thing is, in all three of our water towers combined now, there are 17 Osprey nests. So Osprey nest, and and they are protected by law. So I've climbed all of our towers many times every year for years. There's there's different laws in effect. There's different equipment on Chesapeake Village now that you have to turn off to go up there. So it's everything's in good shape, and we want to keep it that way. We recently painted a lot of them, but um a lot of towns that have radio equipment enter into these maintenance contracts. You don't have peaks in your budget, and also a lot of the radio equipment offsets that cost.
The 261 project, that safe walkway there, what's the funding source going to be for that?
We're going to apply through M dot State Highway as well. So similar funding sources, safe routes to school.
You anticipate maybe that being like another 80/20 situation?
We hope so. I think they they are interested in the project. They wanted to see a feasibility to get as little further along. So now that we have that, we're hopeful that we'll get funding for that.
Okay. Councilman Jaworski asked my question about the Richfield Station water tower branding. So we're still online. We're just tracking that, I guess. My last question is about the saddle replacements. The asphalt been replaced yet? And there I hadn't noticed. And the joint, and my question was specifically about the joints or the asphalt patchings. Again, I haven't gone to look, but we're going to cover those joints with appropriate material. Best way to fix the patch.
Well, we did tack them when we put them in, but we're actually going to mill and overlay. There's so many different checkerboard, if you will, in those areas. We're going to mill and overlay from curb stop to curb stop in the spring in those areas.
What about the the striping then? There's a striping?
There's no striping really on the areas that we did. We're going to stay outside of the parking lot spaces, basically curb island, curb island, kind of in the middle of the road where the saddles were.
Okay, so, okay. 10-4. Thank you.
Sure.
Very good.
Councilman.
Yeah, thank you. So excellent report. I, most of my questions, comments have already been addressed, but I do have just one other on on page five of, I guess this is the Water Reclamation Treatment Plant Report. When I was reading through that second paragraph, and there the the items about resulting in approximately 40 pounds of material, rags and accumulated debris being pulled out of there, reminded me of a discussion we had, I don't even know how long ago that was, where there seemed to be a recurring problem with clogging of some of the systems. And we, is that still happening? Or is this more of a one off now?
It's considered your regular maintenance, correct, Josh? Do you see an increase?
Yeah. The, once we get into the headworks project, that will help to address
Not as, not as big, loud of an issue as a water main break in the road. It is, it is, we did miss one meeting, so it's kind of two months worth. So it's about average.
Okay, good. On page six, water treatment plant. On the middle paragraph, the leak approximately a gallon a minute, the water leak. Do you know what you're going to do about that yet?
We have one more approach we're going to make with Maryland Roll Water to come out to see if we can locate this leak. We have every indication from the meter that there is a leak, but we cannot find it by any means. It's not emerging through the ground. We've used multiple acoustic devices to try and listen to the pipe, and there's no noise. So we're going to be working along with that, and eventually I'm going to work with Public Works. I've been talking with Jay about possibilities of I be able to isolate those lines. Right now, we have no valves to isolate the individual branches in the plant, so we can't even narrow it down to what part of the plant it might be in.
But be quite the mystery story now. Thank you. Oh, and one more for you. On page 11, second paragraph, you all were on site for a severe storm to see if there's going to be any problems. Were there any problems?
I think that storm turned out not to be as severe as was expected. The wind did not cause as many power outages. I think we might have had one flicker in the power. Nothing on the scale of what we'd seen. I think it was just a week or so prior where we had a storm where I had a staff on site, and they were basically just doing circles around the plant, because every time they got something turned on, the power flickered again, he'd have to go right back around, reset things again.
Yeah.
So.
Are you getting ready for Saturday?
We've already been getting in plans. I've talked with the the staff member who's going to be on site. He said if it gets bad enough or the tides are coming up high enough, he's got tall boots, and he'll just sleep there at the plant.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Town Treasurer's Report, we've read Brittany's report. I'll stay with Councilwoman Hartman if she has any any questions.
Hey, Brittany, yeah. With respect to closing out the water park season, will we get a report of the numbers that went through there at council?
We're, to be honest with you, we're, I mean, to to give you an accurate answer, we're, I'm scheduling a work session very soon.
Okay. Thank you. That's it. Thanks for the report.
Yeah, thank you for the report. I don't have any questions. No questions, please.
I was also going to ask about the report on the water parks. I'll look forward to that session, and then I just wanted to confirm under the reconciliation of funds allocated from ARPA, we've got 3.9 million left, and there's no deadline for using those funds. Is that correct? Thank you.
That's a good report. I have no further questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Brittany. Town Engineers Report, we've read Wayne's report. I'll stay right with Dr. Bowden if she has any questions.
Yeah, really, it's, I just have one. And perhaps in some way, the mayor's just answered it. I was going to ask you on the water park, it says that you're working on a revised layout for new park design based on citizen survey. But we haven't even kind of like discussed the survey results. And so I was wondering if you could describe the tasks that you've been given to do one design, two designs. Is it a water park? Is it a different type of entity there? What are you designing?
I'm not designing anything. I'm looking at at the results of the survey, and then we'll we'll look at a design. We've talked about different concepts, which I have built in the past, and I did a quick sketch of what it might look like. That's as far as we've gone. We're waiting for the, to finish the survey.
Okay, I mean, the way the way it read, it just knew park design basis and survey. So with bill proposals, and I was like, that seemed a little premature.
It is.
We haven't discussed it.
It is.
Okay. And so as the mayor said, there'd be a work session. So I know that we were going to discuss the presentation at this one, and so where the work session discusses the presentation?
So we're going to discuss the community opinion survey this evening, and then the work session would be a more detailed review on path forward, as Wayne has suggested. He's preparing a presentation for town council for our work session specific to the water park, which will not occur tonight. It will occur in the very near future.
When he does the presentation, would it be, will it be like designs? Or?
We're just going to talk about feasibility based on the community opinion survey.
Okay, will we be able to, once you do the presentation on the water park, you know, based on the survey, can we ask questions? Or should we?
About the community opinion survey?
Mm hmm.
Of course, you can ask me any question you'd like.
Right, so I'll wait till that time. And thanks, Wayne. I had no other, the way it read, I thought you were already like designing something. And I was like, say what? And I'm like, okay, thank you.
Just a couple of things. I'm not going to talk about 261 sidewalks again, because I think we've covered that, but I'm going to take this opportunity to confirm something that Councilman Jaworski raised, which is the striping on 261 is temporary. And when they put it back, it is absolutely going to put the walkway space back. Is that correct?
That's that's correct. It is temporary. It's not finalized yet.
The heritage is done or near done. Are you guys comfortable with that? We'll be taking ownership of it. Okay.
Yeah, I can answer that. We're still not complete on that. We have not accepted the project as of yet. We're still working through that, and we'll get town council back an update before it is.
And then this, the last thing is, looks like we're getting very close to breaking ground or to being allowed to break ground at Callum's. But now we're in the middle of football season. So do you have a sense of what you're going to do there? Just wait until after the season? Or? If you look at Hollis Report, she explained that, yes, we're waiting for it after the season.
Thanks.
Under the Fishing Creek dredging, have we gotten any update from the state on, I'm sorry, the army on when they might resume that dredging? No.
No, but I know that US Navy is is also pushing for it to occur. We did hear from them last week.
Yeah, I guess it's not the dredging, it's rebuilding. I commented on the 261 sidewalks, just sort of comment on my colleague's comment on the striping. Actually, I think it helps our case, striping the way they've got it, helps our case for building a walkway there. So I'll just offer that.
In theory.
And the last one I had on the Water Reclamation Headworks, any idea of the schedule for the design of that?
Yeah, they have, McCrone has until the end of October to finish the study phase and the initial concept phase.
And the this?
And the end of this October.
Thank you. So I have.
Yeah, I want to follow along behind Councilwoman Bodine's comments about the water park there. I did review the the survey data. We received it recently. I know we're going to officially be presented tonight. I'd ask some questions about that. I don't know if I had a lot of questions upfront with that. I wasn't really sure what to make of the survey results, and they clearly need some discussion with council on what to make out of them and kind of what direction to head. So I was certainly surprised to see that the note that MNA was working on revised layout for the new park design before else has even really just had the chance to discuss it, help weigh in on that direction.
So Councilman Morse, I can just clarify. Again, that that is to prepare for that conversation. So we have to understand what options we have available before we bring that to you. So the idea is to get as as far down the road as possible in terms of feasibility and cost based on a couple of different design options.
Provide as much information as you can. Okay, good. Thank you. And I follow along behind Councilman Jaworski's comment, I guess. Well, the SHA, the striping there, that being temporary, it seems like that's pretty important to make sure they put it back where it was and not just have faith that they're going to do it. Contractors need to be reminded, even SHA, sounds like that's important. So I know with further comments. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Just one question follow up there on the Fishing Creek dredging. So I was under the impression that that had stopped because they had run out of funding, correct? Okay, and so and that we would need to provide more funding to initiate that?
No, no, there's no task for the town to provide additional funding.
Excellent, okay. So that's, that's good to know. That clarifies that in my mind. Appreciate it. Thanks.
My question's on the 261 sidewalk, but just clarification, what is NEPA and EPA?
National Environmental Protection, National Environmental Protection Act. Basically, it's an environmental assessment.
Okay, great. And what is the CD design?
Function documents.
Okay, fabulous. Thanks.
Very well. Deputies Report.
Lieutenant Hollinger. A quiet summer and really no significant incidents to report. It's been very nice and quiet.
And and on that, I, you're right. It's, I can't believe it. You know, we, you know, pre COVID, we, I always knew what our normal summers were, and of course, COVID, you know, all bets are off. And it's, you know, looking at other short towns up north anyhow, you know, I've been noticing it just begin wild and crazy, and I was, so great job. Good presence. So I'll begin this, any questions from the good councilwoman if you have any?
I have no questions. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. No questions, thank you. No questions, Lieutenant.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, not sound repetitive, no questions. And of course, you know, you guys, you guys are getting it done, but stay safe out there.
Yes, sir.
And thank you. Your presentation earlier this afternoon is very appreciated. And, you know, I think you were the impetus behind it. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor.
Yeah, well done, and take care.
Thanks, sir. North Beach Volunteer Fire Department, as always, if we do have any questions, funnel them to Councilman Jaworski. Mayor may offer two comments. Certainly can. Just for the record, so everyone knows, the annual open house at the firehouse is scheduled for Sunday, October 8th. is scheduled for Sunday, October 8th from noon to four. So come on by and see us. And then our, uh, always, uh, very enjoyable trunk or treat festival is Sunday, October 29th from 1:00 to 3:00. Bring the kids and costumes. Thank you.
That's Saturday a week? Saturday a week?
Uh, October 8th.
Oh, October 8th.
That's the open house. The trunk or treat is Halloween weekend.
Very well. Thank you. Okay. Mayor's report. Earlier, I was, uh, reflecting back to, uh, September from seven years ago. We were all on the campaign trail, putting up signs, shaking hands with grandiose ideas about the future of Chesapeake Beach. All our work is not done. We've accomplished so much as a team with very little conflict. And where there was, it was healthy. We have become a community-driven town. And the strength of our, our community can be seen at Kellums Field, which is now open year-round for all citizens to enjoy. I enjoy seeing children in the park over the summer, enjoying their open play activities such as kickball, flying kites, soccer. If you visited our water park over the summer, you experienced that our residents have returned to this wonderful community at amenity. From our first dog swim day to our special town Tuesday swim nights, the water park has become a place to connect, to relax, enjoy time with your neighbors, friends and family. Our walkers and runners about town every day remind us of the importance of our walkable community, a focus of Councilwoman Hartman and Councilman Fink as they continue to lead the town's walkability community advisory committee. Need an acronym. This year's Taste of the Beach event provide an example of community where our local business community residents, their guests and out-of-town visitors came together to, to celebrate each other and the 57th anniversary of Abner's Crab House. I will tell you that watching Bobby Abner teaching our children about crabs and oysters was one of the most special moments of my last seven years as mayor. I want to give a special thank you to Council Vice President Larry Jaworski for his continued persistence in serving the Twin Beach business community. Holly Wall for finding new opportunities to connect our community with our businesses. Bobby and Roxanne Abner for serving as the most wonderful hosts. Debbie Gates of Abner's for her coordination with the town. And to Les King of Windmill Farms and Dale Norfolk for providing labor at no cost to the town to build our great Chesapeake Beach Crab Derby table, a feature we look forward to using many times in the future. And lastly, on behalf of our town residents, I want to extend our one gratitude to the town council for sponsoring this event. Thank you, Dr. Bodine. Councilman Fink. Larry Jaworski. Mr. Morris. Councilman Partik. And of course, Councilwoman Peggy. Thank you very much. That's all I have. Okay. Vote on ordinance O-23-21. An ordinance to the town council of Chesapeake Beach, amending Article 3 zoning district subsection 290-10 ban use table and subsection 290-11 conditions and standards for conditional and special exemption uses. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to first.
Second.
Discussion, anybody? All in favor? Okay.
Offer one comment. And as I've mentioned in the past, I continue to be concerned from an economic development perspective, changes such as proposing this ordinance unduly restrict appropriate economic development in our town. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's a tiebreaker. Opposed?
No.
Okay, very good. And, and the motion passes. Thank you. Introduce ordinance O-23-22. An ordinance of the, if, if I could just stop, congratulations, by the way. Yeah, okay. Introduce ordinance O-23-22, an ordinance to the town council of Chesapeake Beach regarding use of cannabis smoking or ingesting on town property and in any business establishment in town. Um, I'll set the public hearing for 6:55 on October the 19th. Next, introduce O- ordinance O-23-23. An ordinance to the town council of Chesapeake Beach to amend the language of the zoning ordinance regarding stores that sell or distribute cannabis and onsite cannabis consumption establishments. I'll set the public hearing for 6:57 on PM on October the 19th. Thank you. Okay. Planning and zoning, we did receive a report. Board of Appeals, we, we did have a hearing, um, on the 19th. And I believe there's a subsequent hearing on that particular matter on October the 30th. C-Box, we've read Susan's report. Thank you, Susan. Climate Change Advisory Group.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the Coastal Resiliency Steering Committee held a public meeting on August 10th to receive public comments on the town's coastal resiliency plan. Several comments were received from the public during the meeting and additional comments were submitted after the meeting. Coastal Resiliency Steering Committee will schedule a meeting soon to discuss the comments received. Once the steering committee finalizes the draft plan, it will be submitted to the town's planning and zoning commission for further comment. When the steering committee acts on any comments from planning and zoning, the plan will then be submitted to the town council for approval. Uh, co-chair Keith, anything to add? Any questions? Very none. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, stay right there. EDC.
Economic Development Committee. Uh, the Twin Beaches, we've talked about the Taste of Beaches event on September 9th was very successful. As has been stated several times, huge thanks to everybody who helped with that. The Abner's, Holly and the staff by, by a restaurant participating, participating and all the vendors who helped make this another successful Taste of Beaches. Thank you. And we'll see everyone next year for the next Taste of Beaches. Other economic development news, the county economic development authority met on September 18th. Discussion included several items in a closed session. And then finally, the county tourism roundtable met on yesterday, uh, met yesterday, September 20th. Discussion included many, um, initiatives to support tourism throughout the county. Keep an eye out for updated publications from county promoting events and businesses across our county. And one of the items we discussed during that roundtable was the status of the very early steps of the feasibility study on the Bay passenger ferry, which there really isn't a whole lot to report other than the consultant is working on it. We hope to hear something soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Green team, Dr. Bodine.
Oh, yeah, I have a, a quite a few items, so I'll go through them kind of quickly. Um, first of all, our upcoming event is the paddle and pathway pickup. This is our fall cleanup event on Fishing Creek. And it's October 7th, Saturday, um, 9 o'clock. And so if you can picture, bring out your kayak, your canoe. We'll have bags and such, um, clean up along the creek. And we'll have a boat there courtesy of Larry Ringold, um, to pick up the debris that we collect. There's a really nice cleanup event. If you have little people, we'll also have other places within town that are a bit safer for them to, uh, pick up, uh, litter. So that's, uh, Saturday, October 7th. And there will be a, one of those, uh, nice little banners out there at the corner of 260, 261 coming up soon. Uh, next, um, you noticed in Holly's report that the application for sustainable Maryland is underway. So that's a wonderful thing. We'll be voting on later tonight, the, uh, town tree committee. So if you remember in that ordinance that we passed regarding urban forestry, there was a tree committee. And so we'll be voting on that. So we're starting the implementation phase of that ordinance, if you will. Um, next, um, I wanted to mention and say thank you to those individuals that showed up at Bayfront Park. There was an, an educational talk about, um, the flora and fauna in Bayfront Park for, um, the staff that actually work there so they can understand, um, the various flora and fauna that exist there. And so I thought that was really quite nice. And finally, I'll end with this. Um, I'd like to say a thank you to the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts. Um, there were five Boys, Boy Scouts and three Girl Scouts who helped Sue, um, with the, on August 25th to, uh, clean up the railway track, uh, signs along the railway trail. And so the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts helped out with that. And that's wonderful. I'd like to see those folks involved. Um, so hopefully we can do that again. Um, get them involved in other events. You're well aware of the pathway, paddle and pathway pickup. So they'll be there for that hopefully too. And then our next meeting is on Thursday, September 28th. It'll be, uh, at 6:30 PM at the pavilions next to the water park. Weather depending. Weather is bad, we'll meet here in town hall. Any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kellums Revitalization Committee, Councilman Fink.
Yeah, we have not, uh, had a meeting, but we have had several ongoing discussions. I draw your attention to the, um, really having all the approvals in place so that we're able to get the drainage, um, uh, pipe in place. And the, the follow-up to that is, um, and Holly, I don't know if you want to talk about this at all now or, or, or hold on this, but, um, given the results of the climate resiliency study, uh, there is definitely a, a little bit of a pause and a rethink on some of the conceptual plans. Uh, and we're going to expand on enhancing our conceptual plans to take those risks into account. Is there anything to expand on that at this point or should I just stop there?
I can just add that, you know, we're looking at the concept of blue-green parks, um, especially as it relates to Kellums Field. Uh, there's a large area that floods continually. So, you know, looking at BERM ideas that Wayne has explored, um, allowing the water to come in and leave and receive, um, as we plan towards more flooding impacts within that area.
So stay tuned. Thank you.
Very good. Twin Beaches Opioid Abuse Awareness Coalition. A mouthful. Keith?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So it's been very busy for our committee the last couple of months. Um, if you didn't get a chance to attend, we, we held a glow vigil on August 31st down at North Beach. It went very, very well. We had, uh, guest speakers, um, Jason Fallon, Fallon, who, um, recognized the, uh, first responders who had been a, who had been, um, selected by their peers for, for their, um, for their compassion and their work in their, in their communities as, as, uh, first responders. And so that was very nice. The, uh, the theme of this year's glow vigil was we see you. And so we wanted to recognize them for their work that they do with the community. And so they were there. The town of Chesapeake Beach provided them with a small token of appreciation, uh, which they did appreciate, um, as well. And, um, and then Sandy Mattingly, uh, did a memorial reading of the names. Um, and that, as always, is very heart-wrenching to hear all the folks who have been lost. But it's also, you know, I think very cathartic and healing for, for the, for the families, um, who have lost those folks. And then we, um, also did the, uh, naming of the sculpture project winner, um, who was selected and that, the, so a lot of this information has gone out through email blasts. But the person who was selected was Thomas Sterner, uh, for his sculpture concept entitled Big Hug. And, um, so now that that selection has been made, we're waiting on the, um, the final grant to be awarded by the Maryland State Arts Council to, to fund that work. And so, um, that I believe is going to be announced or released, um, in January. And then he will begin, uh, working on a full-scale, um, sculpture that will be placed in the North Beach Sunrise Garden. And that will be next August 31st as part of our glow vigil. Uh, so we hope everybody can make it to that. And I wanted to take this time to just, once again, recognize and thank all the members of our committee. And, and, um, and they are, are Jane Bennett's, Randy George Miller, Andrea McDonald-Fingland, Caitlin Barkel, Candace D'Agostino, Kathy Klune and Katie Wandashan, and of course Sandy Mattingly. And so she, you know, really the heart and soul of these two projects, um, really, um, I think she ran with these, especially the sculpture projects. You know, the, the idea actually came from Andrea. Uh, and, and then Sandy heard it and she's like, yes, I gotta do this. I've got to do this. And if you've ever met Sandy, there's really no stopping her once she decides, uh, she wants something done. And so we're very lucky to have her on, on, as a member of our committee. And, uh, it's always a joy to work with her. And then, of course, we also have some past members, Christian, uh, right back there, who was also a, a, a rock star when she was on the committee. So thank you for all the work that you did with us as well. And with that, we, I'll get to a little more mundane thing. So we did hold, hold a meeting on September 14th at the Northeast Community Center and discuss some of the items that, uh, I've already talked about here. And we're also developing a brochure. And I want to thank Holly, uh, very much and Randy George Miller. He did the original design. And then Holly punched it up so that it looks, uh, pretty amazing, we think. And now we're just going to make a couple of little changes and then get these, um, professionally printed and folded. And we'll have those for our next events. And let's see, our next events that are coming up, that we're, we're going to be doing some outreach, just find the right paper here, will be September 23rd from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, weather permitting. We will be participating in the One More Light Suicide Awareness Walk. That'll be happening right here on our railway trail. And, um, then October 8th, we'll be at the North Beach Voldeer Fire Department Open House. And then we're also working with Reverend Glenn Swanson from Bayside Baptist Church to, uh, do an outreach event with them. Uh, we do not have a date for that yet. And our next meeting will be in November, November 9th, um, 6:00 to 7:00 PM at the Northeast Community Center. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Walkable Community Advisory Group, Councilwoman.
Not only are we going to get a good acronym, we're going to have it start with A. Okay. A few things. So we had our meetings on, uh, September 9th. And, uh, we're working on developing a path in Chesapeake Beach. We'll actually, three small paths, one big path to have people be able to walk through the town to see the various gardens that are in town, the little gardens and the pocket parks that are being developed now that Holly had mentioned earlier. So we'll have a sign, we'll have QR codes so you can see a map of where to go to see these. In case you want to get out, walk, have someplace to go that's just not in and out of the, uh, rail trail, although we do love the rail trail. In addition, uh, we're tossed around, thinking about some names to, um, for the pocket parks. So stay tuned. I think hopefully they'll be done soon and then we can give them all a name and put them on a map and walk to them. Uh, we've also, uh, are having a gentleman come in to talk with our group on getting asphalt art. So this is art designed to be put on the roadways for crosswalks to bring people attention to the fact that people might be walking here to make the car slow down and have a look at it. Uh, we'll get some information from him and see if there's, decide if there are any places in our town that would be a good place to sort of pilot one of these because we're not sure how long it lasts when you've got a lot of salt and rain in cars. So we are looking into that to try to bring some beauty into both our streetscape and to make things more safe for walking. We have had a few discussions with town staff. What would it take to own the streets that the state owns, specifically 261, 260? And have decided that that's not a good idea. The beauty of owning the streets would be we could put in bump outs. We could do more other paintings. We could slow it down more by using physical, um, just physical ways other paintings, we could slow it down more by using physical, just physical ways to shrink the streets to make people drive slower on them. But that has come out to be not the idea that we'd like to have, because it's just too pricey and too risky. So we're gonna let that go. American Chestnut Land Trust, it will be holding a meeting in September, and I forget the date. Do you remember the date, Charlie? Yeah, me neither. I know, me neither. But we're hoping somebody in the committee can go to the meeting. They're, what they're doing there is pulling together a group of communities to talk about how to improve bikeability and walkability across Maryland. So not just in our town, but maybe connecting towns or having other local things and start to promote walkability in areas that are easy to get to. Let's see. We are going to have our next meeting on October 25th at 6:30 in Town Hall. And Charlie, do you have anything to add?
Just, there's another project simmering that goes hand-in-hand with walkability, which has to do with some historical markers around town. I don't want to go down that road yet, because there's still a lot of work to be done, but we've got great support, in particular from Wes Donovan, who has just not only a archival knowledge of town history, but a real passion for some of these photos. And I think there's a real opportunity to do something there, and that would also enhance walkability. So premature, early days, but stay tuned on that as well.
Very good. Thank you. No one finished business. Do business. I feel a bit of a parched throat. Vice President Jaworski, would you mind reading this motion?
Town Council to consider appointing Councilman Charlie Fink to the position of Town Council Vice President. And with that, I would like, I am delighted, and I will say somewhat relieved, to make the motion to appoint Charlie Fink as Council Vice President.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Thank you. Still feeling a little chilly. You wanna? Do you want to take over number two? No, I'm good. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Chesapeake Beach Waterpark Community Opinion Survey Results and Preparations for the 24th Season. I believe we have a PowerPoint slide, which will, the same as your handout. Thank you, Larry. Okay, the site is down, so we're gonna move to the next item until that's fixed. I'll wait for Councilman Jaworski.
Sorry, I'm back up. I apologize.
Back up, see that? Here we go. Okay, back to this item.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm gonna be discussing the Chesapeake Beach Waterpark Community Opinion Survey that was released. And just an overview of the conversation this evening, I'm gonna provide some information about how to access the final report. Town Council, you were provided a draft document at the start of our work session. It has been amended, and I'll get, I have copies for you of the final version of the report. It's also available on our town website, and I'll provide information on how to access that. So we're gonna be looking at key themes across several groups that responded to a community opinion survey: town residents, county residents, our town businesses, and also out-of-county guests to the waterpark. So the full report is available on our town website, so I have our QR code there for you, as well as if you just go to our town website under the waterpark, you will find it there, and I will be posting it after this meeting for eBlast. So just to review, in terms of the methodology used to conduct this community opinion survey, so it was released to the public on July 28th of 2023 and was closed August 25th. Public participation was encouraged through multiple different methods. We posted eBlast on the town website. It was emailed to about 4,000 participants. We also posted on social media sites of the town, as well as the Chesapeake Beach Waterpark. And additionally, we mailed postcards to all of our town residents' home addresses. We provided access through a QR code, and we also added alternative options to complete the survey. If you needed assistance, we made Town Hall available, staff by phone or in person. However, 100% of the responses that were self-reported, reported by participants themselves without any assistance from Town Hall staff. It should be noted that all responses are self-reported, so each of the participants are self-reporting if they're town residents, county residents, out-of-county, or a town business. It should also be noted that some participants did not provide a valid address in their response. However, all of the data in this summary captures all of the responses regardless of that. So in total, we received close to 2,000 participant responses, and that breakdown is about half-town resident, about half-county resident, and then we have a small portion of out-of-county residents, about 5%, and a small portion of our town businesses, about five businesses responded. There's some of the key points across all categories of the survey is that there's really, on average, an alignment to decrease operating costs from our town and county residents. So there's not this significant desire for large park features that increase capital and operating cost. In contrast, our out-of-county guests and business owners are more attracted to larger features. Town residents also do not desire to fund non-town resident use of the park. So on average, across all of the responses, town residents are not in favor of using town taxpayer funds to offset the cost of non-town resident access to the park, while our town businesses do believe that town taxpayer funds should primarily offset user costs to keep our user costs down low. There's also, the desires for large features do not really equal the willingness to pay for the associated cost through park fees. So through the survey, on average, those that kind of responded that they wanted larger features of the park also did not translate to being willing to pay the cost for those features. Some of the key points for town resident responses are that, on average, we've kind of covered this in the key points, that they're not willing to use the funds to offset non-town taxpayers, but are willing to use funds to offset town resident use of the waterpark as a community amenity. Safety measures and access to the community amenity function is important to town residents, as well as local jobs. Across all groups, the town residents are most concerned with capacity levels and the crowd size at the park. So here's the breakdown and summary of town resident taxpayers' responses in terms of, should the park be used for economic development or tourism? Obviously, we see, you know, there's a strong disagreement for those components of the park. We also reached out to town residents, town taxpayers, to see what their thoughts were on use as a recreational amenity of town, and that is much higher, stronger support as an amenity for town residents. Users of the park covering the costs, we can see the breakdown here in terms of primarily, town residents are in favor of users supporting their own access to the waterpark. Again, this is a breakdown of the importance, the key important factors for town residents. So we have safety measures. It's one of the top priorities of community amenity. The lazy river is very important, and that is consistent, you'll see, across all of the categories. Hiring local staff or slides are important, swim lessons. We start to get to lesser important towards the end, the baby pool, the grill, a tourist attraction less important, as well as the store is less important to our residents. So in terms of out-of-county residents, some key points are that the participants that responded to the survey are primarily coming to the waterpark, primarily from Anarundel County, or really the southern Anarundel County portion. And they are driven also by safety, price, and comfort, as well as features offered at the park. On average, out-of-county residents are looking for low cost, high comfort, and are not concerned with the number of features necessarily in the park, or capacity levels or crowd size. So what is most important to out-of-county guests? We still see a consistent theme of safety measures, the lazy river, features such as slides. There's more attraction to being considered a tourist attraction for out-of-county residents, but they also do see it as a community amenity. On average, we see our out-of-county resident interests are very similar to town business interests, or that of a tourist attraction seeking some of the larger features. Apologize, I skipped. Our county residents. County residents, in terms of their responses, were very consistent to our town residents. They also place the very high importance on safety measures, access to a community amenity, and are very highly impacted by cost. However, they were more likely to not prioritize large features. And we have consistency with town residents in terms of safety and community amenity access. And least important, tourist attraction, the grill, and the store. The highest determining factor in county residents' attendance to the park, on average, they're very sensitive to cost, obviously, and comfort. So the general admission cost, seconded by the season pass cost. We did find one notable item in terms of town residents had stronger feelings against larger features than county residents. But we did find that our season pass holders, that are town residents, were more likely to actually appreciate some of those larger features. So when we see, on average, that town residents favor some of the smaller features and community amenity of a pool, we do have to take into consideration, we have multiple different levels of categories. So in terms of our town businesses, they obviously are very attracted to the waterpark as a tourist attraction. They value, but they do also value the park as a community amenity, and that ranked high as well on their responses. They favor the large features over the small features. They're highly sensitive to user price at the park, and they do favor prices being offset by town taxpayer funds. And all groups across all categories are not interested in reimagining the space in terms of, you know, rethinking if it's a waterpark, and maybe it could be potentially another recreational amenity. Across the board, there was no interest in that, as well as very little interest in creating indoor spaces for year-round use as well across all categories. So in terms of our business owners, we have the breakdown here in terms of their responses on who should cover or offset the costs of users at the park, and those are primarily by town taxpayers, both for town residents and non-town residents. And kind of also reflective of their prior responses, there's really not a priority placed on capacity or crowd size or the cost of season passes, consistent with the tourist attraction feel for businesses. However, I did, I did think it was interesting. They are still very interested, although they might not be focused on the capacity, they are still focused on safety measures as an important component of the waterpark. So we see here, just in terms of the responses, of major interest in a community pool with large features. Obviously, the lazy river, the baby pool jumps up in higher priority when we're speaking to businesses, slides as well, and less important to have limited features or small features.
Very much. Boy and staff, that was a lot to put out, gather, and put forth to us, so it's appreciated. Probably would have cost us a lot of money to pay to have that done. So if we have any questions on the survey results, we're not digging into the whole waterpark, you know, finances just yet, but on the results, I'll begin with the woman I'm looking at.
Semi-money. Do we get any funding from the county? Any funding support for the park? We do not, no. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say, you know, thanks for putting this together, and I think this is a great way to get input, because I feel like so, so often, we're here, and we hear from a handful of people who actually show up, and it's great, you know, 800 people from town actually voted. And so I think that's just a really good piece of information. So, thanks.
Yeah, just some observations. Does appear that vetting is solid on this. I mean, there was tremendous outreach. I mean, the direct mail was just kind of on that. Let's see, not in any particular order. You made a comment that some of the, some of the survey participants didn't provide their addresses, but that we used their data. How did you apply the data not knowing where they live?
So they're, the participants are self-reporting. So at the start of the survey, we ask them to tell us if they're a town resident. And then, once they answer that question, they're asked to enter their address. And so they're self-selecting as a town resident. However, we still have that data, and we can, we can, you know, drill down further and only look at responses that have a town address. So we do have that availability, but for the purposes of the community opinion survey, we wanted to just not change any of the responses at all and prevent, present the entire picture.
Was there anything that surprised you with the survey?
I think it was nice to see that the citizens really do appreciate the waterpark and appreciate having it as a community amenity. I don't think that was particularly a surprise, but I think the amount of resident responses that were received were surprising. It's probably the first, the largest amount of resident responses we received from a community opinion survey.
It was good. It was good effort. Important. Solid footing to be able to move forward with some of that. I see, see, there were several questions asked about how do, how do certain people feel about using town funds to help make it more affordable for county, out-of-county folks. I didn't see any questions asking about making, keeping the facility as an enterprise fund. Assume that, that, I mean, I know that this body here is very strongly unsupervised. Talk about that. Another observation, it looks like maybe we could ditch the food service programs. I saw whether there were three questions that were asked regarding desire for community pool. It's not a question. Some of the, one thing that, some of the, well, a lot of the responses regarding use of funds and some of the, their sentiment skewed a little, I would suspect, because of, you know, this season's rate structure, or on the heels of, some of that stuff is up here for some of those folks, and that might skew their opinion a little bit. And I think my... Oh, regarding the businesses, too, looked like there were four out of five offset costs at the park. I was a little surprised to see that there were two out of five of the businesses that participated, felt that the town taxpayers should offset non-town resident access. I was a little surprised to see that. I was a little surprised to see that. That's my only comments. Thanks, Sarah.
Most of my comments have already been offered. I just wanted to express appreciation for the survey. It's very helpful and it'll be a key part of our discussions moving forward and what happens in the future for the water parks. Thank you.
I sort of echo that. Thanks to Holly and everyone who put this together, and also thanks to people who responded. I mean, this is, this is a huge part of this town. And what we end up doing over the next four years or whatever period of time it is, is going to be significant. And I think it's going to have an lasting impact on the town. We want to make sure that it's positive impact and we want to make sure that it's what, what the citizens want. So thanks for all the folks who responded. I assume it's, if people see this tonight, it's too late. Like, I mean, there'll be other opportunities for public input, for sure, but they can't contribute to this. So there's a lot of data here, and I'm sure that's going to, you know, there's not much else I'm going to say about it tonight. There's a lot to digest here, and it's going to be interesting to see how that plays out. I might make one follow-up on what Councilman Morris said. I don't know that the average citizen knows from enterprise funds, not as much as my colleague, Councilman Bodine. But I think they did talk in their own language about enterprise fund by noting that what their preferences were on taxpayer support for county residents, out of town, and so on, which kind of amount, I think, kind of amounts to the same thing. So I think we did get a little bit of a message there. Lots more to come. Thanks again for doing the work.
Adam?
Yeah, this made it really, you know, you could comprehend exactly what was going on. And I think the water park as a town amenity comes through loudly in many ways, but I do have one favor to ask on your report, and that's for consistency. If you look at this.
I will say you're, you're looking at a draft. So I'll get you the finalized report. I have copies for you. That was a draft from last week, if you're looking at that.
For this one?
Yes.
So, okay, so like the bar charts would be consistent so that the highest ones are always at the top. They're very important in coming down.
We can look at that. I can take a look at that with you.
Okay. Because yeah, that, I think that's, it would like, in the one I'm looking at, where it says, "On average, town residents agree with offering a community pool with small features." It would actually move up a community pool with large features higher. And so it's just, it's interesting. So just, you know, to have it properly represented would be good. Other than that, we can digest it, look at it, and it, I'm always a little wary when we use the word average when we're anywhere between 50% and 80% or 75%. It, it's not statistically meaningful, and just so we know.
On average just means across all of the responses received, and that is important to say because there could be outliers and there could be groups of outliers. And so it is important for everyone to understand that these responses are on average. So on average of every town resident response, that is, that is the result.
So not a, not a mean, it's, you're considering it a mean.
Or an average. Right, it's on average. So we have, so, and when you look at the final report, you'll see a further breakdown. For example, town residents that are season pass holders have different responses within each of these categories. So when I talk about town residents on average, I'm talking about all of the categories within the town residents combined. Yes. So I do want to make sure that distinction is there. And so when you look at the full report, you'll see further detail and breakdown in season pass, non-season pass, and do not attend at all. It is important to look at.
Yeah, it's interesting because you go through like 20 years serving the public and you think you know, when it comes to the water park, what the, what the feelings are. And like to see the importance for the locals' residents and appreciate the fact that we hire local kids. It comes through a bit on this report, and I think that's really kind of cool because you think you know it, but until you actually get it written, you're just not sure. And so I look forward to a more robust discussion.
Thank you. Okay. Town council to consider authorizing the purchase of spare parts from the Chesapeake Beach Water Recreation Treatment Plant FY24 budget, but not to exceed 21,000. Got that? Okay.
Yes, so we have a budgeted expense from the, as the mayor said, FY24 treatment plant budget. And this is, was reviewed with town council in the work session, but it's related to purchasing spare parts that are required to operate the treatment plant.
Move to.
Just for clarification, Holly, the agenda says not to exceed 21,000. The attachment says not to exceed 22,000.
Thank you for catching that. It should be 22,000.
Me too. Thank you.
Okay. Did I?
Make a motion to approve the expenditure.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay. You worked it already? All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Now council to consider amending the public works agreement with the Rod and Reel to extend the term of the agreement. Would you like to explain that how?
Sure. And I did hear council's feedback on the public works agreement in the work session, and there were some questions in terms of the bonding amount. So what you have before you is to approve public works agreement extension for two additional years. We have requested a new letter of credit for the full bond amount. There's no reduction in the bond amount. Just want to clarify that for council. And the mayor, once he receives all of the documentation, will consider executing it with your approval.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Well, this is fun. Now council to consider the appointment of the first ever Town of Chesapeake Beach Tree Board in accordance with ordinance O-23-18 with the following members. Lou Alexander of the Green Team, Melanie Crowder of the Green Team, Jay Berry of the Everything Team, Heath Pardeck of the Council, Kathleen Barop, Planning and Zoning, and Ken Rasmussen of the, the Green Team. Dr. Bodine, do you have any preference here?
No, just move to approve.
That's what I want. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it?
Congratulations, Druids.
Okay, at this time, I'll ask, is, is, do we have any public comment? Hearing none, council lightning round. I'll begin with Dr. Bodine. Okay?
Hello, my name is Daniel DeVall, 3610 Chesapeake Beach, Maryland. Have a motion for the town council to address and add clarity in expansion of the town code planning and zoning to allow any application for a project submitted while the Town Planning and Zoning Administration is in session to adopt new comprehensive plan and/or active review assessment planning, the update of the critical area plan for the town to apply this same allowance if, when changing town zone, Town and Zoning Administration. This time is to be described as a transition time. It should be expected to be the last three months with the new zoning administrator. During the above-mentioned times, qualifying applications submitted to the planning and zoning be required to, that such proposed projects be submitted, reviewed, and voted on by Maryland Department of Natural Resources Compensation Commission full board as described within the Compensation Commission's primary responsibilities. I have left this copy there and the printout as the link. Once the Compensation Commission review has finished, the Town of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland Planning and Zoning will call for a public hearing and allow for comment, review, vote to accept, or amend the commission's review within 30 days of receiving said review. The town council will follow the standard practice after planning and zoning. I'd like to add personal, there. It is with so many things, the outcome that is seen does not take into account the work that has gone into getting things done. I bring this up as it relates to all work that goes into service of volunteers, members of organization, youth coach, town council, and planning and zoning. The Town of Chesapeake Beach has been very fortunate to have had someone like Christopher Kucubiac at the helm for so many years. It is within his moving on from the town that I believe we look at adding the clarity to the town code planning and zoning. I believe we have, we all have to be caretakers of not only our town land, but more importantly, the wetlands in the Chesapeake Bay. With the announcement of the new planning and zoning administrator, I believe we should take into consideration that it would be unreasonable for us to expect Ms. Sarah Franklin to not only have the chance to catch herself up to speed and get to know the town while taking the helm. I mention the word helm as we wish the new planning and zoning administrator the best of luck navigating the town forward while staying on course of the previous administrator, Mr. Kucubiac. As it relates to my proposed motion, I have spoken with Maryland Department of Natural Resources and I've, and what I have proposed is an example of the items as I've mentioned, where the outcome we see does not reflect the work it takes. As the past administrator had kept in communication with DNR one of the tasks while at the helm in keeping the town on one course, as discussed earlier within this meeting as it relates to the state highway and what it would take for the town to purchase the property. This is not the case when it comes to the waterways. I would further like to add that we all have the responsibility to work together, offer help, and ask for help when needed. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment at this time? Hearing none, I'll begin the council lightning round with Councilwoman Hartman.
Recently, I had an opportunity for a behind-the-scenes and under-the-scenes tour of the water park. And I have to say, after nearly 30 years of happy use and some sinking into the ground, the old deer is clearly in decline. Features above the water are more than tired, and service tunnels under the pools are the small, dark, cramped, dank stuff of nightmares. After the town poll, it's clear we all want to have a water play area on land in town. And I'm happy to say that the mayor and Holly and Public Works and other town staff are actively looking at how to revitalize it and ensure water park safety will continue. Stay tuned. I'm certain there will be a water park for future generations in our little town. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you for, for being here tonight. It's good to see everyone again. Just wanted to remind folks about the One More Light Suicide Awareness Walk, September 23rd, this Saturday, 6 to 9. Hope you can be there. It's an important issue. I have, unfortunately, in my extended family, have four people who have taken their own lives for various reasons. So, and I know, you know, mental health has been a big concern, you know, and on the rise, especially with COVID. But it was even on the rise before that, especially among young folks. And so, you know, I just would encourage you to support those who are out there and, you know, learn more about signs, signs of suicide. So, you know, if you have somebody that you love that may be talking about that, you know, what you can do to help them and point them in the right direction and hopefully get the help that they need. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. If you don't mind, if you hear about that event being, you know, postponed, could you let Holly know so she can alert the town? You're in touch with her? Okay, she's in touch with me. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on our small-town events, and it's prefaced by small-town. These things are fabric of small-town community. It's always a pleasure to enjoy and to, to attend them. The overdose awareness day, we had the glow vigil. This was the second year that I've been up there. And that's always, that's extremely moving presentation there, if you will. It's probably the wrong word to use, Keith, I'm sorry. It's the, it was a very interesting sculpture that was selected. It seems like inappropriate, the appropriate sculpture was selected. So we'll be looking forward to having that added to the Twin Beach community at some point. And the Taste of Beaches, very, very small-town feel with that event this year. Not to say previous ones haven't been small-town, but, you know, the way that that was packaged up this year and being on the fishing creek and pulling in specifically Mr. Abner as a host and a lot of the tie-ins that some of my colleagues and the mayor have, have made about that, that event. It was just, it was, it was an amazing time. We had a great time. It was a good opportunity to speak with some of the, our local representatives who were there. But it was a very special event, and I'm, you know, proud that we could do this.
I'm going to, I'm going to touch on your comments and pass it on. This is probably a 27-year observation that I go to many towns and I go to events. It's one thing we like to do when we travel. And I like to meet other elected officials when I'm at these events. And I have to tell you, Chesapeake Beach, and this is all the councils that I've served on, has an extremely high attendance percentage than I've experienced anywhere that I have, had traveled. I mean, you guys, the guys that served before you, okay, go to your town events. I mean, I, I know they're cool, it's a good reason to go. But I've been to other places where they, they just don't go. So I do applaud you all and, and your predecessors.
Lightning round, two quick things. One, reminder, everyone, the Butterfly Walk will be on Saturday, September 30th, along the railway trail. It's in honor of former Mayor Gerald Donovan. Come out and join for the walk. And then I just wanted to comment that Melissa Gray hosted a bunch of us to tour the library under construction. Folks, you have no idea what we are in for with this new facility. It is just incredible. And the scheduled opening is still spring of 2024, and I so look forward to that ribbon cutting. So you will be amazed. First of all, before you go to into the new library, go over to the old one before it closes because you will greatly appreciate the new one when it's open. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you look at all my notes?
Yes. You were cheating on me.
First, thanks, everyone, for the vote of confidence. I'm honored to have this opportunity to serve as council vice president, and I very much appreciate the, the support and the opportunity of having had a kind of chat with you guys already. I want to remind everyone about the Butterfly Walk. There's a, some folks know I have a very close attachment to hospice. This event is in honor of Gerald Donovan, but it's, it's in support of Calvert Hospice. Saturday, September 30th, 8:30 to 11:00 a.m. Sign up by September 20th, get a T-shirt. First 200 people to show up, get a medal. And I'm looking forward to the event, so I was there. I was going to thank Melissa, too. The library is, it's just something special. And looking forward to going there. Thanks.
Congratulations. Look forward to it. Yeah, we've had two very interesting tours lately. One at the library and one at the water park. Diometrically different from each other, let me tell you. Maybe we could perhaps arrange one for Public Works sometimes. I know we, we've tried before, like when we went to the wastewater treatment plant. Be nice to do the Public Works also. It'd be cool. A reminder on Pathway and Paddle and Pathway Pickup is Saturday, October 7th. And other than that, I just want to wish you all a very happy and safe fall in autumn. That's all.
Thank you. At this time, I need to, I'm asking for a motion to close the meeting under statutory authority of Maryland Attorney Code pursuant to the general provisions, Article 3-305B, subsection 7, to consult with council to obtain legal advice.
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is over. Too, too close. Have a safe night, please. Exit as soon as possible and have a good evening. Too, too close. Have a safe night, please. Exit as soon as possible and have a good evening.